No old business.
Got warrants?
I'll make a motion.
Oh, yes, I always forget them.
I actually forgot, so it was my one, but I wasn't here.
Well, but for these warrants, you are, and you should have seen this one. So where, where's the motion?
Do I have a section?
I'll second it then.
Yeah, all in favor? So we have a liquor license, the short thing.
Um, can I just, no, two questions not answered on the application, number sixteen seventeen have no response.
Is there anyone in the audience from short thing?
Those are what?
And who are you then?
He's your lines, I'm the manager.
Well, question sixteen seventeen aren't answered on the application. So maybe on the original, we can get them checked off, because I'm not, you know, they're. As a licensee applicant formally held domain license, well, obviously, yes, yes.
Yeah.
Last year, do you want me to put that in, yes? Want me to say yes?
Yep.
And the other one, does the licensee applicant own the premises?
Yes.
So I had the original, so I'll put that in. And this, this is what has to be in blue, is that blue?
Yep.
I will make a motion when we sign that.
Oh, second. Um, do we have, oh, all in favor? Okay, so let me see where the municipal office. There we go. So I'm just gonna pass the signature page.
And while we're waiting, I'd like to give the town boys, big daddy boy for the work they did this week, it looks awesome, down there in Brownsville, looks very good, Dickie and Billy.
Despite the ruckus.
Yes.
We need the bids to open up.
You know people are gonna piss in them all no matter what.
I think, there must have been some excitement when you found those old slabs in, in the, uh.
We knew they was there.
You did?
Yeah.
Do you have any other secrets that we don't know about?
Well, they took care of the drainage problem and others about.
Great for warrants.
Perfect.
Does this have to be in blue here?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can turn the blue around. Is that blue? Let me see the list of things we asked for. So, we were seeing bids for landfill mowing, airport mowing, roadside mowing, municipal heating oil, municipal heating propane, general assistance, propane, kerosene, heating oil, gasoline and diesel for trucks, trash removal, for municipal facilities and vehicle repairs, so let's see. This one is for fuel bid? Fuel bids, so how do you wanna do this? Let's go in order of what's on the computer chair. The first one is landfill mowing, see if we have any landfill mowing. Because we have some bids anyway, somebody wants to work. We have a landfill mowing, this is airport, roadside, municipal, airport. Who's that, what's that?
Oh, that's his, uh, yeah, I need that, that'll be something I need. This is a. A W C, yeah, W C B two.
Landfill mowing, we got two landfill mows. What, what is that, is that their insurance? Okay, but, so should I keep it with the?
It doesn't matter, you can just put it together after this.
What's that? Mowing bid for what?
For what?
We don't know for what? Okay. Okay, well, just thinking here, roadside, airport, okay, two airports, one roadside, two landfills, and one, we don't know. And one.
Carol, when didn't, uh, Angel D come back for the?
Short thing.
Short thing. Tomorrow.
Oh.
Either tomorrow or after me.
Where, where's, do I have the safety page?
It's right here.
Okay, so let's put it here right now, put it in the file, so that we don't.
But they can get it over there.
I'm sure Angel can't, we have to go back to work.
I like you.
Pardon me?
I like him, he's ready to go back to work.
Well, somebody wanna load that.
No, because you're gonna be talking and I need you to record.
Yeah.
So tomorrow morning.
Come back tomorrow.
That'll work.
Okay, thank you.
As long as we know we got it good. All right. Normally I would, but.
No, that's fine.
Thank you.
Okay, so this just says mowing, mowing bid, so this is, I would like to submit a bid for, I don't know yet, it didn't say on the outside, for roadside mowing for the twenty twenty-three season, my bid proposal is for three thousand six hundred and fifty dollars, thank you very much for considering this job and Randy Moss. So there was one other roadside mowing, let me open that one up. So we had two for each mowing thing, did you hold on to?
What to do, open three thousand?
This is, um, Murray's Lawn Care and Services, Robinson, Maine, roadside mowing. To who would make concern, I would like to place my bid of four thousand dollars for mowing, thank you for your consideration.
I will make a motion when we accept Randy Moss.
I'll second that, all in favor? Okay. I'm not going through that, let's do airport mowing now.
Okay.
That just happened, we had like a no name, and didn't tell what one of us. This is. Select board, rep, mowing airport for year twenty twenty-three, I will mow the airport as stated for safe landing, for a hundred and fifty-five dollars per mowing, sincerely Greg Morrison, Down East Land Improvement. And he has his papers. That's. So that's one fifty-five per mowing when it's, when it, when we asked him, I guess. How does that work? I mean.
I think he does it every so often.
I think he does it every once, two weeks or something.
He knows a lot of specifications.
Murray's Land Care and Services, to who would make concern, I would like to place my bid of two hundred per cut at the airport and one fifty per cut at the landfill, okay, so.
So, airport.
It was airport, that one was how much?
Two hundred.
Okay, so I thought, okay, so what, what should we do with the?
I'll make a motion, we give the airport to Greg Morrison.
Will I second?
Second.
All in favor? So since we also have a bid for landfill, we'll open up the landfill ones.
And we know. This one, Murray's, was what?
One fifty.
One fifty for the landfill.
You should get the landfill.
Per cut, I, I don't know how they hand it to that either.
With an engine and these blades go around.
And this one is landfill.
Oh, this is, this is just, just an absolute copy of what he just sent. So he just put them together, but put them in two different envelopes, so it just says, Murray's Lawn Care, two hundred per cut for the airport, one fifty for the landfill. So we do have one more landfill. Did you, what, did you put this back in?
Yeah, this is, this isn't done up yet.
Okay, good. Keep me wrapped, I can't write it down, I'm gonna have to write that. Oh, right, let's see, just like word landfill mowing, I will cut the landfill area twice, once during June and once in October for a hundred and fifty dollars per mowing, active liability agent, sincerely Greg Morrison.
He's only committed to two times?
Well, that's what he said he would do, what, is that what we normally?
We are.
That's the normal.
You just gotta trim it up, I call, keep the old one.
I'll make a motion, we give back to Greg Morrison, for a hundred and fifty for mowing.
And reasoning, because the other one's a hundred and fifty too, because, because.
Well, and he was also specific, I think we do it.
He's been doing it for a long time.
Okay, so I'm not gonna get involved with that, so you made a motion, it was seconded, all in favor? Here it goes, there you go. So, so we've done landfill, airport, roadside, we're still looking for heating oil. And we have heating oil, what's this? Dead River, that's heating oil, let's try that, so it doesn't, okay, so we have two heating oils, one for Foster's and one for Dead River. And this one didn't want us to get in there at all, it's key.
Okay, so let's see.
This is Foster's, Foster's bid is, heating oil municipal, we can offer a fixed price for four thousand gallons of heating oil for three point zero four nine per gallon. Any gallons exceeding the four thousand will be priced at the Machias rack cost plus nineteen cents. Propane, we can offer fixed price of two thousand nine hundred gallons of propane for two point four nine nine per gallon. If it goes over that, it's Machias rack cost plus point five cents. General assistance fuel, heating oil and kerosene will be billed at the Machias rack plus fifteen cents on delivery day. For example, today's delivery heating oil price for fuel assistance would be two point eight eight nine and kerosene would be three point five four nine. Any off route or after hours deliveries can be provided with an additional hundred dollar fee. Yearly harness, did we ask for yearly harness maintenance? We didn't ask that, it's not on.
Propane, you know. Nope.
Okay, so we don't need to read that. Gasoline and diesel for trucks, we can provide an R, RH Foster fuel card for each vehicle for use at any dealer or direct station, the card used will allow a seven cent discount from the pump price for either gasoline or diesel, so it's seven cents off wherever you go, I guess, to get it.
Yeah, we already have one.
What do you mean?
You guys have a card, right?
And who is it with now?
Of course.
Yeah.
So anyway, but then there's another whole. There's a bid for diesel, but I don't know if they do. So Foster's also does a, a break on gasoline as well? I'm just saying, if that's what it says, whether you put, use diesel or gasoline, get seven cents off?
Right.
Is that what it is this year?
I'm not sure what it was.
I'm not sure, I put the bid from last year.
Okay, um, Dead River is number two, heating oil, fixed price of two point eight six eight nine. And there's no stipulation as to quantity. Liquid propane, oh, it's for municipal. Liquid propane fixed price of one point six zero four two.
Right, yeah. What's the difference?
Okay, general assistance, the heating oil would be three point three four eight, liquid propane would be two point one seven four two, kerosene would be three point seven nine five two. So what, um, I can't look at comparisons, I'm too busy reading them, but what's, what do you wanna do with those two?
I'd say we take Dead River on all of it.
I would too, yeah.
Other than the card though, because they didn't put in anything for gasoline and diesel.
Yeah, I mean, we, we've done it through Jay's, they're straight to the end, but I'll make a motion for Dead River for oil, propane.
I'll second, and general assistance.
And general assistance.
Oh, okay, do we have a second?
Yes.
I'm still reading it. Oh, all in favor, I, I wanted to make sure, it looks like it's a little more for general assistance, but you're right, just give it, just give it. So that's, oh, no, no, let me see now, what's in this one?
You gotta get the hat on.
I make the motion, we move that to the end of the meeting?
What?
No, we're doing it now.
I can't move, so.
So.
It's, it's a thousand bucks.
This is, um. Oh, we have to do more gasoline and diesel front, we didn't do that, we need a motion, I'll make a motion that we give the gasoline and diesel, uh, Foster to Foster, right?
Yeah.
That's what Jay is, yeah.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? So this is for trash removal.
Oh, I wonder who that is?
Can't imagine. Also, would like to submit a bid for the Loop Act one municipal trash removal, twenty-three twenty-four season, we will provide one to four yard dumpster at the Loop Act, the town office emptied weekly, we will also provide a two yard dumpster at the public works garage emptied as needed, we will check and empty as needed, cans placed at the town marina boat ramp and three cans along water street starting May fifteen to October fifteen. Our price for these services is one sixty-five a month, we look forward to continuing our service with the town's community evaluation team, with her insurance company. Oh, I make a motion, we accept this trash bid, will I second, all in favor? There we go. That was all the bids we got, the only thing we didn't get a bid for is vehicles there. Oh, thank you, we're here, hi. Oh, was he, yes. It was, and that, is that the same price she charged us last year, I don't, I don't remember. It's a good business for me, huh? Okay, that's all we're fighting for.
Did we do vehicle repair?
Nobody submitted one, we didn't get one.
All be gone.
Nobody wants to repair those vehicles, do they? Oh, Sean.
Park it on the far left side.
What happened, no vehicle repair bid?
I never even thought.
Well, we, we're just to put it back out, I mean, it's still.
Where else are you gonna go?
Yeah, exactly, you're the only Sean John.
I'll make a motion to, um, to re, uh, to accept bids for vehicle repairs for the, at the next meeting.
Yes.
I mean, we can, but we do it the same every year anyway, and, you know, we bring the big trucks to Peter and, and all the stuff to, to Sean.
Well, you want, you keeping it the same rate as last year then? So that's the thing, if it's change, you probably need to submit the changes so we can accept it, you wanna think about it?
Yeah, I'll, I'll.
Yeah, we'll just wait till the next meeting. Make a mo, I make a motion that we roll, that we roll over the decision on vehicle repairs for the next meeting. All in favor? And then you have till four o'clock that date, I'll get it in, and I'm sure she'll call the other person here. Okay, tax for closure. That being?
Yes, that's me, I guess, when's the next meeting?
Two weeks from now.
I didn't want to put the date down, so I don't forget. Twenty-four.
Seventeen twenty-four.
Okay.
I see you over there.
Yeah, I'll run it for. How you wanna do her now, or?
Well, it's up to you.
Okay, no, I don't mind.
You wanna do this now, or wait, can I change it to the end, it's up to you.
Doesn't matter to me, she needs to go somewhere, she can go now, okay. Um, we did actually foreclose on four properties on the tax foreclosure a couple of months ago, a couple of weeks ago.
Do we have properties in this?
Not at the, no, not, there's, there's one I'm waiting on, um, these three here are actually foreclosed. They, um, those ones can be put up to bid. This one, he, the other one is one remaining property, Matt twelve ten B. It may fall under the new special foreclosure sale process that was passed in December two thousand and eighteen.
So do we have enough information right now that we can put the map together, or do we need to know whether it falls under the?
Those ones wouldn't, because that is not a primary residence.
And this is land.
Those both are just land, and the other one is.
This is a building.
It, that's a dilapidated trailer, so that will be like cleaned and go, yeah, clean it up, because they don't own the land.
Okay, so this one, forty-eight property station road, it's just a trailer, and it's gonna be, um, put out to bid.
For cleanup, I mean, it's just trailer only.
So that's something that.
It's just the trailer.
Just the trailer and no land.
And then, um.
The other two are land.
Then we have Bill Creek Lane, which is just land.
Yeah, it's two, two flats, two lanes.
But we really, in order to come up with putting it out to bid with prices, they gotta be able to look at this, the evaluation stuff.
Why don't we cable it?
Well, we take this for a minute, yeah, that's my idea.
And I'll have the answer on the other one before then, but I think I'll check on the call.
You're on, Amanda.
Okay, so, we've been talking about it for several years and we're finally getting around to doing it. We're actually planning on having a clam bake down at Stockford on July second at three P M. We're gonna do it at the exact same time as the Lamps is doing their concert, so kinda crowdsourcing. Um, what we're gonna, the money is going to go into the conservation fund, but we're planning on using it to get some form of a storage unit, so that we can actually store our gear, especially if we're gonna sink money into things like spat boxes and stuff like that, we need a place to be able to store them during the winter that they're not gonna get ruined.
Where are you gonna put the building, you're gonna get one of those little sheds?
We were gonna get a little shed and see if we could find a place down at the public works building, something that we can get into on a fairly regular basis, especially if we're doing conservation and stuff.
Have we, well, he'll run it by, Dickie's here.
Yeah, we haven't even, we haven't even gotten that far yet. This is definitely something that won't go ahead until November, so.
But you already have money in the conservation fund that's coming up, I believe?
We do, but we're using it for fat stuff and I was pricing buildings and they're gonna be two, three grand, which would take up most of our funds, and we don't wanna go that route, especially if we can do a clam bake and kinda raise money and get people together and talking.
We can't wait to have a clam bake.
Sounds wonderful.
So what we wanna do is we wanna be able to use some of the money from our conservation fund to buy supplies to do the clam bake, um, we are asking for a thousand dollars, whatever we don't use, we'll go back. We just wanna have some money on hand in case we run out of clams, we can buy more. As a plan B, because we've never done it, so we really don't know what we're in for.
Are you getting any, are you getting any donation plans from that?
We're working on that, we have a few people that have already decided to donate a bushel. We're planning on needing a minimum of six bushel to get it going, so. We, we just need a contingency plan. So we're gonna do, uh, two pounds of clams, um, baked potato, a corn, and a can of soda for about fifteen dollars. Um, I've already talked to the Department of Marine Resources, they don't need anything as long as the clams are refrigerated before the event, and as long as we use the words suggested donation, we don't need to get a food permit.
Excellent research, Amanda.
Yes, I went, because well, after a year of trying to plan this and it finally, I had a lot of research already done.
I was wondering why that's on a lot of things you go to, why it says suggested donation for that reason?
That's why.
Yeah, it's, it's, because they don't wanna turn around and tie people up trying to get a permit, especially if something is gonna be a fundraiser.
So do you need a motion from us?
Yep, a motion that we can use money from our conservation fund to.
So move.
Yes, yes, so move.
Yes, so, so, okay.
And I think John is gonna get it into the qualitides for us already.
All in favor?
Already done?
Already done.
Sweet.
There you go, kill two birds with one stone, thank you for all your hard work, Amanda.
You are welcome, at least it's a, you know, part of it all.
One of the things, Amanda, that you might think about, and I don't know how much work you wanna do, um, is that the, the ladies out at the church like to make pies. And if they wanted to make pies, you could sell them for slice or dessert.
That's an idea.
Yeah.
That's an idea to talk to. And it would help both of us, I mean, we're kinda more the merrier at this point in time, we just don't wanna completely overrun Kurt's.
Yeah.
Uh, can't, can't, concert either.
Yeah.
So that's why we're gonna set up pretty close to the water in the back, so we don't have people walking trying to get to us, try to get to them.
We have a sidewalk, we have a side routine.
That was, well, I was.
You wanna turn it into a catwalk?
Oh, my goodness.
But we're, we're trying to be, we're gonna try to be as respectful to even them, because we're very happy that they're allowing us to join them, so. And we want this to, perhaps if this goes well, to do it on a yearly basis.
They need a break, so, yeah, go down, sneak over there and have some clams. So next on the agenda is the safe harbor update, um, Ralph and I met with the DOT and some engineering companies and some environmental people, so about six people came up from Augusta to meet at the site, they, their purpose there was to, some of them had never been there, and Orel Gornow, of course, you all know him by now, he worked on the sidewalk project and he worked on the Brownsville, um, field project. Um, they pulled their equipment, there was equip, people in town didn't think there was testing going on, but the testing was attached to two buoys and it was underground, it was wave action and the rise and fall of the currents, and that's what they did for a month, so that's being analyzed. And a new, um, additional funding, quick turnaround was sent to me a week ago, and the DOT submitted that and it's due tomorrow, so they literally, they, they had a week, and so it's officially, we're waiting to see how much money they can, they're getting. I, I'm, I've been told for the last four months that ten million is definitely coming, I don't know if it's gonna be more or not, but they may ask for more than that, so I'll keep you, uh, informed, just, you know, nothing goes fast with COVID and federal government, I'll, I'll see it when I believe it, like everybody else. So, school budget meeting reminder, there's a school budget meeting that's quite, I'd say, important on June first, uh, they only have to have three, right, so this is the last, I believe, of the budget meetings.
And they changed the time.
And the time was at, is at five, yes, five with their, with their meeting to follow at six, so, um, if you're interested in the school budget, you're, it's open to the public and it's going to be up to you June first. And, uh, did we have other business?
Yes, personal property taxes, I've talked to a lot of businesses here, and what I call it is anti-business taxes. What they're asking, basically, for a guy like Sean, is him to pay taxes on something that he's already paid taxes on, all the businesses, and keep paying, now, I would like to get rid of that. I'd like to get rid of it all together, and I'd like to put it on the ballot, kind of next town meeting, no, the personal property.
Oh, you may wanna research it with adjacent because of state law.
Whiting doesn't have it, and some, some people here pay it and some, some don't. So how can we ask people to pay taxes on something they've already paid taxes on?
You have to check with the, at the state law.
I was, I was also asked by one, one, uh, business owner, and he says, how come we have to keep paying and paying and paying? We have all these nonprofits in town that pay nothing, we're killing our business in this town.
But that's the state, I mean, we don't regulate the state laws, so, um.
Some towns have it, some don't.
Then maybe they're just not following the law, that's you.
Do you have the, uh, the rule there to read, that, that it's a law?
Not tonight, but.
Like, what can we table it, say somebody has the rules?
Yeah, I mean, I can provide it, it, it's the state law, I don't have, I don't have to choose not to clock it, not to assign.
No, no, but I called, I called a board member at Whiting, that's, no, we don't have it, other towns don't have it, and some do.
Doesn't mean it's not correct.
I mean, you look at the motel.
So you know for absolute fact that state law is like personal property tax?
She has it right in here that it's a filing title thirty-six MSR section seven oh six states that the assessor.
May, but the, the word is May, not should.
Exessive May.
May.
I know, May.
The thing is, a lot of people don't know this, is the motel out there, they have to pay on every bed, every land.
Yep.
Everything that they have there, and who keeps track of what they have? Who's gonna go out and audit everybody?
Excesses agent.
Do they keep track of the people who have seasonal rentals?
I'm not the excess, I'm not the excess agent.
The point is well taken, that very, very few businesses, I, I know that mine in the business ten years ago here, I did get a bill for personal property tax, and I just paid it because, like, they didn't even think to question it, but many, many people are not in, on the list, so how can you bill one person without the others? It has to be fair across the board.
I mean, that's why you did the revale, that's the gym.
But the deadline for filing is May fifteenth, states that the assessor may request a list of tasks for personal property, so I really think we, we, we should probably, if it's for May fifteenth, we need to know what the rules are, and that could be before next meeting.
Yeah, it's given one week to turn mine in.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's given a week, now, now the thing drives me.
Anyone turning in, you can't.
I'd like to know whether it is in fact, no, no offense to that, is, is it, is it we can or we have to?
Yeah, there's a big difference.
That's what I need to know.
When I, I had my concrete business. I paid ten thousand dollars in taxes to buy the stock. And the town wants you to pay again. Sold it. Now somebody out of town can have those same forms sitting in this town.
Looking it up. I'm trying, thank you.
That you have the same form sitting in this town and not paying nickel in taxes. That's not right. You're putting all of us, all the businesses behind.
And Jesse, and when you purchased it, could you have gotten a sales tax exemption certificate and not paid so much?
I'm not that lucky.
Oh, I did, I've just seen some come through. I just did not, was that something you could have done?
Yeah, the fishermen, it's different. Fishermen, it's commercial fishing.
They have to pay on the traps, yeah. They're just supposed to pay on the traps. Some do, some don't. You know, there's nobody that.
Yeah, is there any fisherman that pays personal property tax on it, on the?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
But they pay, they pay it now.
Some pay it every year and some haven't paid it at all.
Right.
But they, are they billed?
Yeah, every year.
You can't enforce it, that's what I'm saying. I mean, it's easy to have it.
Well, you can. You could. You can go to small claims court. But, but you're, yeah.
But it seems like not all businesses are billed. I don't know what the percentage is.
I don't know what they are. They could pop up and no one know it. I don't know.
What's the recourse if you don't pay?
At this point, someone is, yeah, you're in the book.
When you're in the book, but what's the real recourse?
The selectmen would have to make it a vote to go to small claims court.
Did you see whether it was mandatory and answers?
I'm, I'm not finding that answer yet, or, you know.
I mean, there's people in the book themselves who are not.
I'll research this more with other selectmen, but the ones I talked to, some towns have it, some don't. I do know that. I do know that. But I mean.
My only.
You gotta sponsor any of the businesses.
I understand why they do it.
I was working on something else this week on the school roof project, so that kept me pretty busy. So I, if I had seen this letter, I would made sure that I would have had the answers. I, I just saw this letter that was sent out. And we are the board of assessors and this letter should have been run by us. I do know that.
And I mean, people do have a right to appeal, no matter what. I mean, I want them to know that. None of us said that you don't have a right to appeal if you don't make this thing through.
Did you see this with the John that says?
No, I did not copy it.
I didn't know it was for you.
So I, I would just be curious, and you probably don't know the answer to this question now, but in regards to, um, revenues to the town, what is the line item from personal property taxes?
I'm thinking it's about twenty-five, thirty thousand depending.
So not something we can easily just dismiss because it's twenty, thirty thousand dollars of the revenue in our budget?
And we do collect a, a quite good percentage of it. It doesn't look like it.
We got, oh, I think it comes from Cooks, right?
I don't know the exact, but even before, I mean, he did give them a hefty bill.
That's a draconian law. That's, what?
That's what, you talked about a couple years ago. So then like the fishermen, you get it all.
You get it all back if they would just do the paperwork if they want.
But they do paper.
Yeah, right.
And they'd even offer to help us.
And that's fishermen. What about the other businesses? Do they get it back?
It might be then do it. It's a business tax.
No, I mean, I, I was talking to Brandon. Brandon, I mean, like so many other businesses in this town, they have good money in the summer. And in the winter, they wanna keep everybody working. So all that money they made in the summer, they spend it in the winter time. So it's a vicious cycle. We're just putting taxes on it.
I don't think the taxes are that much because if we only bill what twenty-five thousand per year, what's his percentage?
Well, it's because some people pay it and some don't.
That's what I'm saying. I'm saying, what's his percentage of twenty-five thousand of all, of the business? I mean, I can go look at the tax.
So, um, I think as a board of assessors, I would like to know, I think we all, we would all agree that I would like to know the list of what, of who, who got this letter.
Yeah.
What businesses, what people, what businesses got this letter? And it went out on Town of Lubac Assessor's office and technically we needed to know.
I think it took a ration now.
Well, we just, we needed to have this unfortunately.
Well, I would imagine it's been for many years of the assessor in town.
And nobody questions it anymore. That may be standard practice for her to do when she, when she reassesses.
Jim had said he wouldn't enforce it. I mean, he sat right here one night and he told us, he said, I don't enforce it.
No, he said he's not gonna go retract, cause like trash, you can have it today, it's gone tomorrow.
Really? Jerry, we were hilly. He got, he got taxed for a tractor he never owned for twenty years.
So first we need to know if it's mandatory that we charge personal property tax.
I think we should examine this law.
Be the definition of what businesses are supposed to pay and if it isn't in fact mandatory. And none of this can be decided in the next twenty minutes or half hour.
I think all businesses are supposed to pay taxes on the value of their, uh, property, you know.
Well, here's something. We don't even have a system for D B A. I came here years ago and started the Lubac, um, Dance School and came up to Betty and said, I'm, I'm starting a business. And she said, great, consider yourself a business. And I left, there was nothing. I just said, oh, okay. And so we, it starts with registering your business with your town. If you wanna be a D B A.
I mean, the thing is, you can come from out of town and operate in this town and not pay a thing. If you're in this town, you get penalized for doing business in this town. That's not what we should promote.
Well, that's another thing we should look at. If you, if you have a business in a town and you don't, and you're not a resident, do you, the business?
If it's in town, yes.
The personal property tax should in fact be part, be.
This is, that's why, somebody needs to look at this because it's totally unfair to local businesses.
Absolutely.
And what do, who do you, do you talk to state legislators?
First things first, just find out whether it's a may or a must.
And get rid of it.
It just says here, if you, if you read this, the deadline for filing is May fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, title thirty-six M S R A section seven oh six. Did you look that up, Nancy?
Uh, no, I've been looking it up, but I can't read that.
States of the, well, this is what, what, that's the important statute. States that the assessor may request list of tax, taxable personal, personal property tax and that. So she quoted there, so to me, may doesn't mean should or could or has to.
Or do we have the ability to waive an example of somebody in town? It's similar to, remember we're looking up the, the power for removing dilapidated homes today. We can, upon notification, fine anywhere from a hundred and fifty up to like fifteen hundred dollars a day. We choose not to. We choose just to keep sending out letters and I think we're trying to get a little more emphatic with them. But that is a, you know, M S R A section four, de blah blah blah, may, so we have the ability. So we may also have the ability just to simply say.
So I did find something about it. So the purpose of it is for the assessor to make the assessment. So the taxpayers to list properties, before making the assessment, the assessor may give timely notice in writing to all persons liable to taxation or qualified for an exemption subject to full or partial reimbursement by the state to furnish to the assessor true and perfect lists of all the property the taxpayer possessed on the first day of April of the same year. And may, at the time of the notice, or thereafter, require the taxpayer to answer in writing all proper inquiries as to the nature, situation, and value of the taxpayer's property liable to be taxed.
But is it mandatory?
Liable to be taxed in the state or subject to an exemption subject to full or partial. This tells you that you have to pay it, but you can be reimbursed. Uh, there's a whole big thing here. I'm trying not to, you know, read it all too loud.
Why don't we check with an attorney, the town attorney?
Sounds like a good idea.
Yeah, cause it seems like a useless law.
Again, sometimes.
Taxpayer is thirty days from the receipt of the request for a true and perfect list to respond. Upon written request, the taxpayer is entitled to thirty day extension at request to give that list. Information by the taxpayer in response to an inquiry that is proprietary information is created, blah, 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 blah.
Okay, so this is dated March first. When did anybody get this? I mean, it's, it's May.
I had it a day ago.
What?
I had, I was given one week's notice.
Well, that's, that's not right, right there. That's not right either.
I mean, and, and let's be, let's be upfront about this. My personal, her personal property tax out there is a field bank. I mean, that's, so it's not about us, it's about everybody else.
No, no, nobody was, I mean, you know, I have a charter boat business. I, I.
You, you have businesses that have paid a lot of money for what they have in them. I mean.
Well, I, I'd like to know whether or not it's mandatory. Then I'd like to know whether we have the power to, um, not.
Okay, so penalty. It is unlawful for any public official or any employee, agent, attorney, or consultant of the taxing jurisdiction to willfully disclose any taxpayer information made confidential by this section for any other purpose than the purpose of conducting fraud information. Should treat confidential information, it doesn't say it.
It says it's mandatory.
It doesn't say it's not. That's what I mean here. It's all the state law.
You gotta call main, uh, mains, uh, main tax, you know, main.
It's a state law that, that businesses have to, that business.
Is this personal property tax for businesses?
Yes.
Yeah.
Do I have to pay taxes on my patio furniture?
No, actually it would be if you had a tractor and you did bush hogging or anything like that. You'd have to pay on the tractor, the bush hog.
You pay, you pay on your equipment that costs you to bring you in.
If you owned a skitter, you'd have to pay on a skitter, that type of.
Anything you use to make money in.
I think the important, I think the important thing is here is to find out whether it's mandatory. And then secondly, I think that if, if we don't have to charge personal property tax to businesses, it would be one way of lessening the burden of moving here and starting a business. We've always been trying to find a way to bring businesses here. So if we're one of the ten communities or however many there are that don't charge personal property tax, then that would encourage people to come.
So we only.
So I wouldn't worry so much about the loss of twenty-five thousand dollars if you bring in ten new businesses in because they're not being overtaxed.
You look at Derek Lyons, the job he's done, the job he's done down there with that building. How much has his property tax increased since he's been there? The place was a dive, now it's beautiful. So now we're gonna, we're gonna tax him on every washer, every dryer, everything he has in his kitchen. I mean, come on. They're young people, they're hardworking.
Well, I think it just depends on what's, whether, whether we have the rights municipal officers to waive the personal property. So that's really, we maybe need to call the lawyer.
But I've talked, I've talked to every business in town.
And what would be the guidelines, what you have to pay on too, like me, I mean, I gotta walk, you have to pay on every single wrench of it.
Yes.
Cause I would never be able to figure that out.
No, of course not.
You'd have to pay on every wrench, every lift.
Well, it won't be, well, it won't be the age.
And that's a major sense. I'm sorry, Gina?
Yeah, every, every wrench, every socket.
I know the planning board, we've had a hard time getting them to the state bridge, the Airbnb. So Airbnb is flying under the radar all the way across the board. So if you're going after personal property.
Businesses. Where does that fall? That's a good question.
Yeah, we're gonna have to.
You have to make it inclusive.
I know the vacation rentals are something to nine percent sales tax per weekly rental.
And the motel, and the motel is.
And the motels.
But the, the Airbnbs don't have to have all those special licensing.
I'm not sure if that's been regulated yet. I think the state's trying to figure that one out. Amanda?
I was just gonna add to the Airbnb thing. Eventually we do have to talk about how much of us think they're making as far as housing prices in this town. Because you just got another three Airbnbs in the last month. That is literally three families that could be living here providing employment to this town. And, and the odds are, people that own those three, the Airbnbs, don't even live in the state.
The other thing with the Airbnb is they don't have to meet the same fire record. You know, they don't have to put sprinklers in their, like the motel or light their bedding racks. So I mean, they fly under the radar all the way across the board. So it's not fair to the other businesses that are there.
At this point, you begin to realize why a chamber of commerce can't get legs in this town. You begin to realize, um, why you haven't got a lot of people coming in here. If you've got punitive laws like this, who would prevent anybody from truly succeeding? So I think, you know, yeah, we do that.
Well, so it really just depends on the state statute and what's mandatory. And if there is, you know, if Whiting and other towns do not charge personal property tax, then, then there's a precedent to not charge, to not charge, whether it's legal, lawful, or lawful.
I mean, I, I've spoken to every business in this town about it. I've been approached by a half a dozen of them. And, and I agree with them. How can you ask them to keep paying and paying when we have a huge land grab going on? And they pay zero taxes.
That's right.
And you're asking all our businesses to pay, pay, pay.
Yeah, I agree.
On this end, you give it away. On this end, you take it from the working person.
Well, I think we, we went back to, the fact reason was that we would put it on, if, if it's legal to remove charging personal property tax in the municipality of Lubac. That we put it on as an article on the warrant and we let the town decide, not the select board.
Yeah, they can't come back. Yeah, they can, they can't come back from this.
No, I, I agree.
I think that we all have too much of a vested interest in either way.
And that's, that's what I'm asking, is let's see if we can get it on the agenda for the annual town meeting.
Provided it's legal. I, I see no reason why we couldn't have the town vote on it. I think.
I think we have to however respond to this because this.
We do.
Well, this assessor is trying to complete the reassessment we asked of her, so she can't assess a business until she has a response by law, until she has a response from them over a personal property.
Well, I think we need first we find out whether it's may or, or has to.
But who's gonna let her in?
Well, I, I, and I'm, and I'm just saying we have to, I think we have to do something because.
We have to tell Jackie that in fact, it's gonna have to be held.
This is what we're gonna do.
It will, it'll have to be tabled until the town meeting. Nobody won't maybe, if we, if we can do this, we can table it till the vote of, at the town meeting.
Is she gonna walk in Sean's?
Send her a official letter.
Is she gonna walk in Sean's garage and know what she's looking at and value?
We will send Jackie a big letter after we find out whether we can do it first.
Well, and I think it's, and my point is only that it's gonna affect that reassessment piece that we're asking her to do. You know what I mean? Because for her to do her reassessment, she needs to assess the businesses. Part of the business assessment is the personal property.
Yes, but she's gonna be working for us going forward.
I'm just saying.
So she will be here to pick that up later.
But yeah, but I don't know how she does the reassessment without that information. Unless we can, unless we can opt not to do it.
Well, one is buildings and land and the other is personal property. It's not, it's totally different.
I understand that. It's all part of her assessing. That's why she sends these letters. For her to assess these businesses, she has to know their personal property.
I think you're asking, let's find out if we legally can even ask.
Well, I'm, I'm kinda glad.
Legally even, if we cannot ask for personal property tax, let's see if we can do that or, or tell her anything.
Here's the other thing. Somebody like Sean or somebody like Derek, they're paying on a commercial building. They, they're already paying more taxes because it's commercial, it's a place of business. They're already paying a premium. Same with Lyons I P A, all the businesses. If you're commercial, you're paying a hell of a lot more in taxes than if it's just residential.
And I think it's called a moratorium Nancy.
I don't, I don't know, I'm just.
I think it possibly, if we, if we can, we can call a three month moratorium on personal property tax until such time as the town decides whether we should have it. I know we're, I'm pretty sure we're allowed to do that. Gina?
Getting to Nancy's thing about the assessment on businesses. If a house falls under for businesses in that house and the house is closed off for the winter, who's gonna know whether it's a private residential or a rental?
Well, that's the whole problem. It's very unfair. It's just, but if it's required, that's another story. So, uh, make a motion that we table.
I will.
Table the decision until we find out from our lawyer whether or not we can revoke the request of personal property tax. So that's my motion.
I mean, I'll say it, miss.
All in favor?
And that, that's the thing, some towns do it and some don't.
Well, it seems to me that it's a bit of a bad one, you know?
Yeah, we're one of the few.
And I don't.
I don't think we're one of the few.
No, but I think we're around here. Yeah, but I think that we're, it's a bad, it's a bad one.
Rachel?
Yes.
Sorry.
Public comment, anyone? Renee?
I'm not Renee, but thank you, dear.
Sorry, Ruby. I do that. I call Rachel, Renee, and Ruby. I have my glasses.
Yeah, put your glasses on, dear.
I keep giving it, sorry.
What about you, Bunky?
Yeah, Bunky. We got Bunky's name right though. So, um, I'm just gonna motion to adjourn. All in favor?
I don't wanna go.
Oh, sure, sure.